All right. Thank you again, everybody for joining us again. My name is Godfrey Plata, Deputy Director with LA Ford, part of the Fair Rap LA Coalition, and you're going to hear from a number of different speakers today to explore the ideas that could gain fair representation for Angelenos all across the city. And those two ideas are independent redistricting and city council expansion. And I'll share a little bit more about the goals of this particular call as it pertains to those two ideas. But I want to give you a sense of who you're going to hear from. You see their faces and names and affiliations across this on the screen. So it's not just going to be me for this hour. I'll sort of play moderator. I also want folks to feel free to use the chat box. So as we go through today's program and you've got questions, feel free to use the chat box to place your questions there. Because we only have an hour on this call, we're going to set the expectation now that not every question may get answered. That has nothing to do with you or the type of question you ask or anything like that. But our basic goals for today are to create introductory language around two possible reforms that could be advanced by LA City Council in order to better represent Angelenos. And those two reforms are independent redistricting and city council expansion. This call is built to be a basic introduction. We're going to build foundational language together so that we can talk outside of this Zoom about these two ideas. We're going to lift up a lot of unanswered questions and nuances to resolve in future conversations that will need to have across the city, across different community interests. If we're going to seriously explore one or both of these particular propositions. And so we want to recognize today that there isn't going to be a whole lot of time for discussion. But what there is going to be time for today is a lot of learning. And we're going to present to you at the end of the call, opportunities to have conversations in person about all of the things that we're going to be talking about, because we will intentionally lift up places where different communities will want to be in conversation with each other and problem solve together in thinking about both of these different reforms. What we're going to do in a moment is we're going to start with Timothy Watkins, who is a pretty big deal in all things related to South LA Watts and including topics of redistricting and thinking about representation. So in a moment, I'm going to ask him to share with us why we should be considering this from his particular community lens. And then what we're going to do is go from speaker to speaker. We're first going to build language for how this type of charter reform would happen. What does that mean and look like? We're going to focus in on independent redistricting for about 10 to 15 minutes. So what is that? What have we done in the past and how would this be different? And then same thing for city council expansion. What is the case for city council expansion? Why might we think there could be advantages if we expanded the number of city council seats that we have? And then what questions remain to be resolved from that? And then I'm going to share a couple of next steps that we're going to take and that you can take if this is all very interesting to you altogether. So thank you for joining us again. I'm going to pass things to Timothy Watkins. Thank you for joining us this evening. All dressed up for the holidays. Can you share a little bit with us about why you think we should be seriously considering these two reforms?
Well, it's interesting. My passion for social justice led me into a huge campaign for environmental justice. And within that campaign, I had to approach many elected officials, appointed officials with the, with, with the facts that in Watts, unfortunately, our children have been hyper inundated with heavy metal toxins and other volatile organic compounds. And so, you know, when I go to my councilperson or to my elected official and they, they don't know what to do about it. And basically, you know, have no response. And then I understand that where we live in the city matters. A councilperson, just like most people on this call, may, it may be safe to say we care more about where we live than where we work. And in Watts, in the case of Watts, we're 15 miles away from where our council district is seated. And it's been that way for 100 years. And for 100 years, Watts has been sort of the brunt of politics in Los Angeles. A great, great fundraising platform, because anyone that wants to raise money to help so-called poor people can set up shop in Watts and wherever they take the proceeds from that effort. You know, the folks of Watts don't necessarily know. So I started, you know, I started saying it was time for us to redistrict. And I'd ask, what time is it? And folks got used to saying 15 to nine, because we wanted to move from council district 15 to into council district nine. When you see the geopolitically gerrymandered state of Watts on the map that will be shown a little later, you'll get a real clear sense. How can three quarters of a city community be surrounded by county boundaries? That's what Watts has, two and a half mile square, the most densely saturated public housing community west of the Mississippi, one of the highest infant mortality rates in the nation. And along with that maternal mortality rates, we could just go on and on and on. And unfortunately, the nine universities that have joined me to study environmental justice issues in Watts, all, all have benefited from the study of poverty before. They get master's degrees and PhDs. And Watts continues to be sort of, you know, it's not a guinea pig by any means, but it certainly is a subject of intense interest when folks are trying to understand how the hell people make it when life is so hard. So redistricting, you know, if it's done properly, redistricting, if it's done independent of influence from elected officials. And I don't mean, you know, the independence that is, you all have, everybody must follow the rules. And there's going to be no communication between the elected official and the commissioner. What a laugh that is. What a laugh that is. And I did all that work. I got people to turn out during the pandemic, to write letters, make phone calls, appear in town hall meetings, only to find out that in the end, even though we were largely unopposed in the effort, that a single person in City Hall was able to go in the back room and decide that that effort meant nothing. And so, you know, I'm disenfranchised. And as a result, you know, I'm twice as stubborn, twice as committed to the idea of a self determining commission. A self determining commission, meaning that it's armed with the autonomy to make the decisions it makes with unfettered, on, you know, untainted authority. So that's my story. And I will answer any questions anybody has along the way, if there's an opportunity to do so.
Thank you so much, Timothy, for getting us started with those provocations and that really personal advocacy that you've become so responsible for and taken leadership on. And it resonates with me in particular. I'm thinking about myself as a Koreatown resident. And we've been split in four city council districts before, and then we had to fight to be represented by one, and we still often get lost in the mix of giant city council districts that represent 250,000 residents or more. As we talk about and unpack these two ideas of independent redistricting and expanding city council, we want to have in the back of people's heads how these things would happen before actually diving in to both reforms. And so to explain the process of charter reform that would apply to either of these particular reforms, I'm going to pass things to Rob Kwan.
Thank you, Godfrey, and thank you, Timothy, for anybody that paid attention to the process last year. You know, brought absolutely relentless advocacy to this issue. And seeing how we weren't able to fix this problem just really, just hardened why we need to address this issue. What you're looking at on the screen are the final hand edits that were submitted to city council by the Charter Reform Commissions in 1999. And I like reflecting on this, one, because it's very amusing that they felt equitable distribution of government resources was a step too far. But two, because it's helpful to look at the preamble of our guiding document and ask whether we have a responsive, effective and accountable government through which all voices in our diverse city can be heard, whether we have fair representation and distribution of government resources, whether we have a safe, harmonious environment based on principles of liberty and equality. I don't think I'm being too harsh in saying the answer to all of those is respectfully, hell no. The situation is bad across this city, but we got to keep in mind that these issues are of underrepresentation, merely compound systemic inequities that impact communities of color hardest. Change is long overdue, and now thanks to some disgraced politicians who helped illuminate just how bad this situation is for everyone, not just here in the city of LA, but across the country. We are no longer asking whether we need an independent redistricting commission or whether we need council expansion, but asking what kind of independent commission? How soon and how big should we expand the council? So on that note, how do we change the charter? Godfrey, if you can take us to the next slide. The city charter is our version of a constitution. It is our guiding document. Changing the city charter is done through a charter amendment, and it has to be a ballot measure, and it has to be approved by the majority of the voters. There are three ways to get a charter ballot measure on the ballot for voters. And the first and the easiest way is LA City Council's majority vote. It only takes eight out of our 15 council members to get something on there. Back in June, we actually voted on a charter measure to increase the ability to focus contracting on city businesses specifically and not just county or state businesses. So that's something that can go easily overlooked in this process is it can sound like a big whole deal, but really it's just eight council members saying, we want to move something forward for the voters to consider. There is the hard way, and that is through initiative petition, where you get 15% of registered voters in the city to sign a petition, and that's the way that you can move things forward. That requires 316,550 signatures that are valid from voters in the city of LA. That, you know, would, would easily be a multimillion dollar effort to get things forward that way. There is a third way, and it's a, it's a bit of a unique one, an elected charter reform commission. And that is a 15 member commission that, that voters actually select the commissioners. And you would need eight out of 15 commissioners to move that forward. There are two ways to create an elected charter reform commission. One is through eight council members moving it forward or 15% of registered voters signing a petition to create an elected charter reform commission. So we can go to the next slide. The, our current city charter, just for some background, is drawn off of our, is largely drawn from our 1925 charter. The last major charter reform effort that was comprehensive occurred in 1999. We had, we actually had two competing charter reform commissions. And because of one of those was an elected charter reform commission, city council actually did not have a whole lot of leverage in that situation, because the charter reform commission was able to say, you better move this thing forward, and if you don't, we'll put our own thing forward to voters. There were, you know, a lot of housekeeping issues there as far as our charter. It was really clunky and long and convoluted. So they brought it down to 143 pages. And it also, you know, fine tuned some things to ensure that the mayor had a little bit more power in the process and how our city runs. For a successful charter reform measure, you know, keep in mind, you got to get 50% of voters behind it. We're dealing with issues of fundamental representation. That means you need to have a wide, diverse coalition. You need to be working with people that you maybe don't normally work with, and sometimes on the other side of issues over. And it also means compromise. This isn't about, you know, you know, just picking a number and deciding that that's the way things go. We need to have wide input on this kind of issue. You need to have community based organizations talking to people. You have to have a civic education campaign. And keep in mind that even though we're trying to deal with a corrupt system here, ultimately, people are so cynical about things that the idea of having more politicians is something that they're going to have distrust for. Saying that an independent commission is going to be better, we know that's the case. We can see it elsewhere, but there's going to be inherent skepticism from voters over this thing. So we need to have a lot of people actively engaged in this, whether they're talking to their neighbors, people within the organizations or neighborhood councils. And for the last slide, I just want to quickly touch on something. And that is, is there a way we could do this without changing the charter? And the answer to that is maybe. When it comes to the state's authority to step in, we had an LA County Independent Redistricting Commission draw our lines last year for LA County. That was something that LA County voters never voted on. It was actually something brought about via the state. The state has a whole lot more ability to weigh in on these kinds of things with counties. It's a whole lot more murky with a charter city like the city of Los Angeles. There have been certain bills like the California Voting Rights Act, the Political Reform Act, and the Fair Maps Act that have come along, where they, you know, that is something our city does abide by. But there is an outstanding legal question as to whether or not the state can actually impose something like this. There is a bill that was introduced last week by Senator DeRosa and Korea and Assembly Member Korea SB 52, which addresses this. Just know that it is something on out there. It will likely change a lot. And hopefully this simply encourages our council members to get their stuff together. And we don't actually have to bank on the state bailing us out there. And with that, I will turn it over to Godfrey to lead us to the next thing.
Thank you so much, Rob. And as you can hear in, in his overview, Rob has acquired so much expertise around the weeds of both of these particular possible reforms and also how we might, all the different ways you might need to take a look at in pursuit of the reforms if they become interesting to us. But to go back to one of the earlier things that he said, at this point, we really want to focus on both of the reforms separately, because there are lots of questions to resolve, even about what each of these would look like. What kinds of independent redistricting commissions or variables do we want to think about? For city council expansion, it's not just a number of seats and, and the different possible scope of possibilities there. But there are many other different variables that we would want to keep in mind. So we want to focus on each one separately for the next 15 minutes each. And so I'm going to pass things to Charles Evans of Advancing Justice SoCal to lead us through the first conversation about independent redistricting commissions. Charles?
Thanks, Godfrey. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to discuss why independent redistricting commissions are important. But before I do that, I want to set the stage by briefly describing how redistricting works. Every 10 years, district lines are redrawn based on where populations actually live, as determined by the census. This redrawn occurs for any level of government where the public collects representatives based on where they live within that jurisdiction. So for this jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles, for example, which has 15 city council districts, each of those districts represents one of these entities that needs to be redrawn every time the census puts out information about where people live within the city as a whole. When this sort of redrawing takes place, there are certain requirements that any successful map has to meet. Firstly, the districts have to be drawn in a way where each one has roughly equal size in terms of population. That's population, not in terms of number of voters. So it doesn't matter, you know, what, what age those people are, what their ability to vote might be. All that matters is whether they're there or not. People have a right to be represented equally in their districts. The districts must be contiguous, which is a fancy way of saying that they can't be disconnected from other parts of the same district. You can't have half a district over here and half a district over there. No, that'd be one single entity. But when drawing these district lines, the geographic integrity of the neighborhoods and communities of interest should be respected by those boundaries. A community of interest is a community where the people there share a common social or economic interest that simply can't be divided up. This last cycle, my organization was heavily involved with advocacy around Koreatown, which has a very diverse population of Koreans, but also Latinx, Black, Bangladeshi, several others, all living within this very compact area, all overlapping with one another, creating its own essentially community of interest that needed to be preserved. When drawing these maps, the line drawers should try to use features such as natural barriers, streets and city limits to make the boundaries easily identifiable by residents. The idea is to make sure that these, these things are respected as much as possible. But that's lower in priority than them being contiguous and that the communities of interest are respected. And finally, the districts should be drawn in a way to make them as geographically compact as possible. The idea is to keep nearby people together rather than excluding one population in favor of incorporating a further away population. But I listed them in this order for a reason. The higher up ones on the list are more important than the lower ones. So it's really, really important that with the line drawers, if they can't meet all four of these requirements other than the quality and population size, that they try to prioritize first contiguousness and then later preserving neighborhoods and communities of interest. And only after that, looking at boundaries and compactness. It's important, but not as important as the higher up elements. And then, of course, this is all subject to state and federal law. State and federal Voting Rights Acts prohibit certain voting practices, including district line drawing that might result in illegal discrimination or vote dilution against protected classes such as members of a particular race. In addition, the Fair Maps Act includes procedural requirements to ensure public participation and also determines the priority of the considerations that we just went over. Next slide, please. So that's all nice, but how does that apply to Los Angeles? Los Angeles has a diverse population of almost 4 million people. Its population hails from over 140 countries and speaks over 80 different languages. The, as I mentioned with the Koreatown example a few moments ago, sometimes individual communities can overlap in a way that essentially creates new communities. And you can have competing interests among these sometimes overlapping communities of interest. During this past election cycle, we were participating as part of the Koreatown redistricting task force. And we're trying to pull together all the various voices that needed to be heard just for that one community of interest. Was a big effort and trying to do that all across the city with similarly overlapping communities of interest is a, is a large task. Oh, within the city, there are nearly 100 neighborhood councils, each of which has a long history that, that almost gives those, those neighborhoods their own, their own interests that might count them for consideration as a neighborhood to be preserved. The city has complex geography, freeways, rivers and aqueducts. And if you're talking about the valley versus the heart of the city, mountains, divide up the city in a way that's not seen in a lot of other cities. But according to the law, that has to be considered, even if it's a lower consideration than things like preserving communities of interest and keeping, keeping districts contiguous. And then finally, you also just have the jaking boundaries that make up the city as a whole. You have that harbor gateway connection that straddles right through the southern part of Los Angeles County to connect Wilmington, San Pedro to the rest of the city. And then overall, on the west side, you have all these carveouts for cities like Santa Monica, Culver City, Beverly Hills and West Hollywood. And then for all of that, for almost for 3.9 million people with all of these diverse interests, with all of these potentially competing interests that might cause lines to be drawn one way or the other, with over 100 neighborhood city councils, but we only have 15 districts. That's roughly 260,000 people per district. There are a lot of cities with fewer people. Next slide, please. So now we've talked a little bit about the background, let's talk a little bit about what's wrong with how redistricting works in Los Angeles currently. Both the Los Angeles City Council and the Los Angeles Unified School District have advisory commissions. And these advisory commissions do a lot of public participation and they, they hold a lot of meetings. They listen to people's input, they produce maps, and it gives people false appearance of independence. In fact, the commissioners for both commissions are appointed by and serve at the pleasure of the electants. The LA City Council's Advisory Commission has 21 members. Three are selected by the mayor, two by the city council president, and then the rest are chosen by the other city council members, the city's controller or the city attorney. And again, they serve at the pleasure of these elected. So if at any time the elected was to replace an appointed commissioner with somebody else, they can do that, effectively giving them control over what the commissioner might say. LAUSD is similar. It's 15. And again, it's chosen by the mayor, the city council president and LA Unified School District Board members. In both these commissions, there's, there's nothing to prevent any sort of conflicts of interest among commission staff. You can have staff members or even commissioners be former elected officials or people who are, you know, clearly intending to run for office or have connections to the offices of existing electants. And there's no real limits on ex parte communications with commissioners. Los Angeles City Council did recently implement some limitations on ex parte communications, but they didn't really go far enough. And frankly, they were voluntary limitations. They can remove those at any time. So they're not genuine limits. I should probably explain a little bit what ex parte means here. It's important for communications between the people who have an interest in redistricting and the commissioners be done openly, so the public can see and respond to any interests or concerns that are raised. Ex parte means that the communications happen behind closed doors. And that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the electants who appointed the commissioners, who are interested in having maps that favor their reelections, being able to, behind closed doors, talk to the commissioners about what they want outside the view of the public and outside of the discovery scrutiny. The process is pretty, pretty straightforward. The electants appoint commissioners. They form a commission that holds public hearings. They receive public comment. And they make recommendations on the maps. That's what they are, advisory committees. They advise the city council on what to do. At that point, though, is where things go off the rails. The council can amend the maps without any public input, with only the mayor having any real veto over what's, what's being produced. And we saw this in this last cycle, the, the commission produced one set of maps. And then the city council essentially went and set up their own ad hoc committee to basically review and redraw the maps as they saw fit. Next slide, please. So the question becomes now, what can we do to fix it? I think it's easy to see from what I was just describing that Los Angeles needs an independent process for determining its district lines. As it stands right now, the people who would be elected by the populations within the drawn districts have almost absolute control over the process that determines what those districts lines look like. An independent process would have commissioners chosen by an independent body and chosen to reflect the diversity of Los Angeles, not just the needs of the electants. The commission would have to operate independently of office holders. So that means no ex parte communications. Everything's got to be on the record and subject to public scrutiny and no other influence. You can't have commissioners that can be replaced anytime an elected fears they may not go the way the elected official wants them to go. And then finally, most important, when the commission selects a final map, after receiving community input, it needs to be final. It can't be changed or superseded later by the city council, because it doesn't suit their needs. An independent redistricting commission would have to be tasked with drawing lines that are intended to empower the citizens, the neighborhoods and communities of interest within Los Angeles City to elect candidates of their choice. An independent commission with such a task would still have to make compromises. But it would make those compromises based on the needs of the community and not, not as a form of horse trading among electors. This is something that can be done. There are already several examples of successful independent redistricting commissions that we could model after. The state of California, for example, has a citizens' redistricting commission. It's, it's gone through a couple of different cycles already, and it seems to be working pretty well. The cities of San Diego, Long Beach and Oakland also have their own independent redistricting commissions, some of which have been in operation for years. And again, you know, give us an example of what a city level independent process can look like. If anyone's concerned about the sheer size, I want to point out that there are counties also that do similarly, including our own county of Los Angeles. It's not been a perfect process, but the, the problems there had more to do with technology issues and how they were implemented, rather than the fact that the commission was truly independent. with technology issues and how they were implemented rather than the fact that the commission was truly independent. San Diego similarly has an independent redistricting commission. And there's already bills before the governor to add even more counties to the list of counties that would be moving to an independent redistricting process. There's just no real excuse for why a city the size of Los Angeles has to be limited to its archaic system of allowing the city council to have absolute control when there's clearly other models that allow it to work. Thanks, Godfrey.
Thank you so much, Charles. And again, we're talking about these two reforms in tandem with each other. Because if we are talking about possibly expanding the number of city council seats because of the current size that each city council seat represents, we also have to figure out how we would then redraw those boundaries. And certainly, independent redistricting commissions show advantages as, as, show advantages over the previous systems that Charles just went over. So thank you, Charles, for educating us on all of that. I'm going to pass things to Kelsey Schwartz, who has done some research and studying around the possibilities of city council expansion and is here to share a little bit more about what that would look like, the case for it and particular questions that might need to be resolved beyond this particular Zoom. Kelsey.
Thanks so much, Godfrey. And thank you all so much for being here tonight at this teach-in. It's really important. And as Rob mentioned, you know, there needs to be a lot of public support, big coalition building. So this is exactly what we need. And I'm going to be giving some background and a future path forward for expanding LA City Council. So LA City Council was last expanded to the current 15 districts in 1925. So nearly a century ago. Since 1925, LA City has grown and changed substantially in its territory, population and diversity. So 15 council members now approximately represent about 4 million people. And that means that each council member represents over a quarter of a million people or Charles had mentioned about 260,000 people. So residents have to compete with a quarter of a million people for their council members' attention, making city council pretty inaccessible to the average resident. And people are so far removed from their council members that they're, they're losing faith in their government's ability to solve complex problems. So there's all these citywide problems that just continue to worsen. Issues like homelessness, housing costs, public safety, traffic congestion. All of these things have increased in magnitude. The Los Angeles City Council, it needs to expand in size in order to increase their capacity to respond, solve and more adequately represent their constituents and bring LA City residents closer to their representatives. Having smaller districts are also, this is also going to lower the barrier to entry for candidates to run and win city council offices. So this will allow for more diversity within the electoral process and less entrenchment of incumbent power. And as Godfrey mentioned, I actually recently completed my Master of Public Policy at UCLA. And for my group's master's thesis, I spent the last year researching these two types of charter reforms, expanding LA City Council and LA City adopting an independent redistricting commission. If you're interested, Rob just posted the link to the, our final thesis report. And it goes into a lot more of the background and a lot more evidence to why we need to expand LA City Council and have an independent redistricting commission. You can also scan this QR code if that's easy. And then, you know, feel free to reach out to me after the presentation too. There's a lot of good stuff. And if you could go to the next slide. So this graph here shows that LA City has the highest ratio of residents to council members in the nation. The ratio of council members to residents in LA is about 1 to 260,000. Now, city council sizes, they do vary across the US, ranging from five to 51 council members with no set rule or standard. However, Los Angeles residents have less representation than any other city in the US. New York City has the largest population, but a larger city council of 51 members, which makes the ratio of council members to residents for New York City about 1 to 173,000. And Chicago, the third largest city in the US, they have a ratio of alderman, which is their council member's title, to residents, which is about 1 to 55,000. Los Angeles City should be a leader in good government, not lagging behind. If you could go to the next slide, please. In regards to the redistricting process itself, by only having 15 council districts, it is a near impossible job to fairly and successfully split up the city's over 100 different diverse and different neighborhoods. During this last redistricting process, the 2021 redistricting process, one of the commissioners, Michelle Pritchard, said, "One big issue is that we have faced the structural constraint of only 15 council districts to represent the incredibly large, diverse and geographically vast region." The 2021 redistricting commission, they even recommended in their final report that city council expands to at least, at least 22 districts and that the city adopts an independent redistricting commission. That said, as Godfrey had mentioned, there does need to be a lot more community input investigation. There needs to be a lot more input to come to a consensus for a specific size for a larger council. So that's one of the, the questions that the FAIRABLA Coalition is grappling with. And Charles talked earlier in our presentation about redistricting and the need for an independent commission. And so I'm just pinpointing with this slide how redistricting with only 15 council districts makes the redistricting process nearly impossible. And as a result, it deep, there's a lot of deprioritization, deprioritization of certain communities, typically communities of color, low income communities. And Godfrey, if you go to the next slide, this is just one that Timothy had mentioned earlier that we were going to show a map. And this is a great quote too, to go along with this map. This is a quote from the 2021 LA City Council Redistricting Commissioner Sonia Diaz. "Through council expansion, Black Americans, Asian Americans, Pacific Islanders or Latinos can increase their opportunities to elect a candidate of choice and neighborhoods like Watts can move into a district that better reflects their sociocultural dynamics." So Timothy had mentioned earlier in this teach-in about how Watts has been stuck in Council District 15 due to redistricting rules that each district has to be about equal population. And this map showing Watts in pink at the top of CD 15. And you can see that Harbor Gateway District, that's the thin sliver, it's a really wonky looking district. And so Watts, it's a predominantly low income, Black and Latino community and it's overshadowed by those harbor cities to the south that are wealthier. There's a lot more population. I saw in the chat that Tim had put the difference in the population. And so there's, there's just a, a really big overshadowing happening. And so the harbor districts, the harbor cities, excuse me, they are politically more powerful. And this is just one example where there's a lot of other neighborhoods in LA City that have felt the same deprioritization by council, feeling inadequately served, heard and represented. And historically, council members have been majority white, male and wealthy, which is not reflective of the average Angeleno and especially not reflective of specific council districts. With such big districts, running and winning a council seat requires a lot of money and connections. And currently incumbents, or another word for sitting council members, and the wealthy have the advantage. This system reproduces the status quo and makes it harder for low income and ethnic and racial minority communities to gain political power, to benefit their communities. And so through council expansion, new, smaller districts would reduce the barrier to entry for candidates to run and win city council offices. This would allow for more diversity within the electoral process, less entrenchment of incumbent power. And furthermore, smaller districts would increase the concentration of similar demographics and needs, which would increase pressure on council to address a lot of these pressing needs that are right now being deprioritized, overshadowed. And so historically disenfranchised communities would have greater access to their council members, greater voice on council and greater opportunity to elect representatives that reflect themselves. And there's just a, a little, this bullet point here at the bottom of the slide. So during the late 1990s attempt, the last time they attempted to expand city council, MALDEF, which is the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Educational Fund, they drew maps on an expanded city council that showed how a 25 district council could increase Latino representation from three to six and African-American representation from three to four. And so if you can go to the next slide. So there's another example of council expansion increasing minority representation on council that can be found in New York City's expansion to 51 seats. When New York City's Charter Reform Commission was deliberate, deliberating, expanding their city council in 1989, they had a few goals. So they stated that our own choice of a unicameral body consisting of 51 single-member districts reflected several goals. To enhance minority opportunities to elect candidates of their own choice, to increase minority membership and minority party membership, to maintain as council of manageable size in which all members could meaningfully participate and to increase constituent responsiveness by decreasing the size of each district. And they found that by making their districts smaller, that racial and ethnic minorities had an increased opportunity to elect their candidates of choice. Over the next decade, actually, New York City's council saw minority representation grow from nine members to 20 members, or almost 40% of their council. And so as Rob had mentioned in the beginning, generating public support for council expansion has to include showing these concrete benefits that different communities across LA could gain through expansion. Clear messaging in voter engagement and civic education is key to building public support for expanding city council. And it cannot be overstated that community-based organizations are critical to successful charter reform. And as I mentioned in the beginning of talking about expansion, charter reform efforts require a massive amount of coalition building. And so this is work that the FAIRABLA Coalition has been doing for the past year. And we want to invite you all to join in, in that effort. And thank you again so much for all of your engagement in this teach-in. I'm seeing the chat just go crazy. I'm going to go through those, but for right now, I'll pass it back to Godfrey.
Yes, I love it. People are already organizing in the chat around particular reforms that are adjacent to and would support any of these endeavors that we're talking about to ensure fair representation for all Angelenos. But exactly to underline what Kelsey just said, there is no way that any sort of charter reform is going to happen without deep community engagement with each other. What we want to do is, is get behind something we have all talked about, discussed as community organizations, neighborhoods, activists for each of our particular communities and areas and, and get behind something that then council can put on the ballot so that we as Los Angeles can decide for fair representation and we can rally behind something that we believe in and will benefit our communities. And so tonight's conversation was just the beginning. Many of us have been having these conversations in silos amongst ourselves or on Zoom like tonight. But really what we want to do is use this particular snowball that we're rolling tonight and get it into person. And so we want to foreshadow something that we're going to try to do at the beginning of 2023. We are tentatively aiming for a Saturday in February. You see a tentative date on your screen and we're seeing, we're saying tentative because lots of things can happen in, in the course of the next a couple of weeks to reshape whatever date we actually leaned on. But the goal is to actually build momentum from the conversations that have especially come out of redistricting last time, the leaked audios that came out in October. These very conversations that were happened, that we're having on Zoom and bring these conversations in person. Because we want to make sure that community members have an opportunity to build relationship and trust with each other, have a space to express strong perspectives, strong opinions, strong questions that we need to grapple with, that we cannot resolve over the course of an hour's time on Zoom or in a chat box. We, we want to be able to create other working groups, other community conversations that cannot be had on a one-time level. And so we want to start that off by creating a pretty rigorous space, meaning by rigorous, I mean a full day's worth of conversations to not just build those relationships in real life, but to, and not just to build on the common language that we're building right now, but to surface those tensions, to surface those questions, to service that feedback and to begin to map out a path forward over the next year, two years, et cetera, as we figure out how to move these particular reforms forward. And if we are successful, then how to implement them in ways that we know will benefit all of us. So everybody on this call, by virtue of registering for it, will hear about this particular in-person convening. What we want you to do is begin to talk about this with other organizations that you're a part of. Get a sense of, of their understanding of, of why we're in these particular conversations. Connect them with others on these calls, begin to network with each other. So that way, when we arrive on February 4th or whatever date we actually land on, we're in a place to then lean into the conversations and discuss. So this is where we're going in 2023. And we're glad that you're here with us to begin building together this long path and journey that we're about to take. That's going to be challenging, but possibly very powerful for each of our communities. If you can't wait until February and this call to action when we're together, we want you to connect with this group that's already building. So for that, I'm going to pass things back to Kelsey to share how you can get plugged in in the interim while you wait for this February get-together.
Yeah, so you can see on this slide, we have a couple links. And so, you know, just to refresh everyone's memory, so the FAIRABLA Coalition, it's a bunch of good government groups, individuals, all organizing around these two types of charter reform, LA City Council expansion and an independent redistricting commission. And so we have a fancy dancy website, thanks to Jamie York, who's on this call. We have an email that you can reach us at, and then there's also an interest form that you can, and we'll paste all of these in the chat. And thank you so much for your engagement with these issues and please reach out, get involved. We need a lot more. We need so many people under the tent for this charter reform efforts. And yeah, thank you all so much.
Thank you all again for engaging this evening. We know it comes at the end of a long day for everybody. I'm seeing in the chat box references to things that we're concerned about right in front of us right now. We know there's a reelection to fill the CD six seat. We know there's a city council member, we need to get out of his seat. And while we're doing these things in the interim, we absolutely need to be thinking about the future that we're building beyond this as well. And so we're hoping that all of us can be working together. That's why we need a giant coalition. We hope to see you on either our next Zooms, but hopefully in person. The first of many in-person convenings we will probably need in order to shepherd this forward. So thank you to our speakers tonight. I'm seeing Timothy, Rob, Charles and Kelsey. And then thank you for your engagement in the chat box as well. We will be posting a video of this in case there are colleagues and friends of y'all's who, who you want to make sure see portions of this particular conversation. But it is likely too that we will recap some of this whenever we actually engage in person. So thank you all so much. We're going to stop the recording here and have a good evening. Thanks, y'all. Bye.